Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of November 29th. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. I'd like to thank Liz Poplowski, who's here with us from SMC, helping with our meeting this evening. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to address the committee this evening. However, in the future, if anybody wants to join us for this portion, please contact us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury-- I gotta get this right-- Okay, next is chairperson and members' report. Anyone have anything? Nope. Nope. Next is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Just a couple of pieces. If you check your mailbox today or sometime in the next day or two, you'll receive the fall edition of the Shrewsbury School Journal, which is sent to all residences in town. Want to thank everyone who contributed to it. There's a lot of terrific information in there. Some information on career technical education and career exploration. Some information on how we are the school district that downloads the most eBooks on the Sora app, which is an online Massachusetts library for literature for young people. And a whole host of things, an article from Ms. Fritz about our strategic plan. And I encourage you to read it, and we'll make sure that that gets posted on the website as well, if you're interested in reading electronically. And we'll make sure to send that link out shortly. The other piece I wanted to mention is that I actually just sent out a nice link to a news broadcast that Spectrum News did on our new Maple and Main store with part of our RISE program. And I did send along a flyer, but there is a winter pop-up market that is on December 7th. That'll be from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m., so some special evening hours with over 16 local vendors and a raffle. And I think it's going to be pretty busy. So parking's available at the former Beale School in the center, as well as the library, as well as the parking lot next to the business Maple and Main in the center. And we'd encourage people to stop by weekdays or for those special hours. They're also going to have some special hours when the town does its lighting the common ceremony as well. But it's been a terrific debut by the Maple and Main store, and I really appreciate people supporting it. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Our first time scheduled appointment was a discussion on an athletic sponsorship. However, the sponsors is Cornerstone Bank. The representatives were unable to be with us this evening, so we're going to table this and move it to a future meeting. The next appointment is an update on the state MCAS testing. And we have Ms. Clouder here with us this evening. She's our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and assessment, and she will provide a report on the 2023 MCAS testing exam results.
It's a little lonely up here with three chairs. Let's move this over. There we go. Thank you. As you know, a detailed report is in your book with lots of information. The challenge here will be to tell a story about an overview of the data without recounting the entire report. But for those watching at home that want to dive into the details, that report will be available online. I think to frame the issue of state testing, it's helpful to think of the analogy of a checkup. Regular checkups are good for people, and they're good for organizations. And especially when the test measures what's really matters. And that's true for MCAS. MCAS was designed to measure kids' critical thinking abilities, their application of knowledge, their connections that they can make across subjects, but most of all, their readiness for post-secondary world. And we certainly want to make sure that all students are prepared to be successful after high school. And MCAS gives us a sense of how that success is building over grades. So the other thing that's important to remember about the MCAS is that it really led to higher expectations for all students. Having that annual checkup means that we're obligated to look at individual student progress as well as collective cohort progress. That said, there we go. A test is a snapshot in time. So it remains true overall that we're a high-performing district in a high-performing state. But MCAS is a good way for us to think about opportunities for improvement, both in grade spans and in specific subject areas. And in general, our results show that the post-pandemic academic slide has halted, and we see signs of recovery in math. Particularly, we're on the way to recovery more generally with ELA. What's important for this slide really is just to remember that, given the change over to the new test, that the test results for this year are better compared to last year or than to 2019. So when we think about MCAS, we have two distinct measures of student success. Achievement scores tell us how students are achieving relative to the state standards for their grade level. And growth scores measure how an individual student's test score compares to other students' scores within the same grade band by comparing their score histories. So students who had the same similar MCAS scores are called their academic peers. So for some subjects, I'll talk about just the achievement scores. And for others, I'll talk about both achievement and growth, and you'll see that in the headings. But I think sometimes those two things are close confusers. So just remember, we get two distinct measures. One is achievement, one is growth. Okay, and here are some growth score reminders. Just remember that when we're looking at the comparison, we're not looking at comparison for state-- all state data, we're looking for how a student's individual score compares to other students' scores that had that same history. Okay, so when we're talking about science, we're talking about, give it as chapter one of the story. We can see that science testing, it happens at three grades, grades five, grade eight, and grade 10. Science testing at grade 10 resumed last year, so we can compare these results for all three grades, which is not true last year. And the data story here is really different for each grade. In 2023, 55% of students in grade five met or exceeded state benchmarks in science, compared with 63% in 2022, which is a decrease of nine percentage points. From the point of view of the cohort, it makes sense. A lot of the things that are tested in grade five are based on earlier science concepts taught at the elementary level, and we've been really prioritizing both ELA and math, and student science instruction was disrupted. At the same time, the drop makes us look at our scores in comparison to others. And when we look at two sets of comparison districts, both the Assavitt Valley districts and the DART districts. DART stands for the District Analysis and Review Tool districts. So those are districts with similar demographics. We were in the top five versus the top three last year for the local districts, but among the lower scores for this grade band when we think about the DART districts. For grade eight, you can see that we have a slight decrease over last year. Not, it's a smaller arrow to show that decrease. But it's still, we see that compared to other state scores, we're achieving pretty typically compared to last year's. We see a slight impact in science at grade eight, not much of one. Last year, if you recall, for grade 10, we saw a drop in the scores we typically would expect to see in 10th grade science, and we see a huge increase. So that we had that first year of the new test in 2022. This is the second year of that new test, and we can see the scores rebounding. So that's a good news story. When we think about math instruction, I think this is like chapter two. I'd summarize this section by saying, on average, that students in grade three to eight are about nine percentage points before where they were in 2019, which is prior to their learning losses from remote schooling. But achievement levels in these, in this subject either went up or stayed very close to last year's results across the grades. I'm going to highlight in particular grade four and grade 10. Grade four scores are among the highest in grades three to eight, with 73% of students meeting or exceeding state benchmarks in math, which is a gain from last year of 3%. And as a point of reference, in 2019, 79% of grade four students met, exceeded, its grade level benchmarks. So we can see we're closing the gap, at least in math, for grade four. In looking at the district, comparison districts-- okay, so sorry-- you can see that we compare pretty well among Assavitt Valley and similarly among DART districts. So that's a solid foundation for students to kind of build their concept knowledge as they segue to middle school. When we think about grade 10, we can see that not only have they increased from last year, but they're within five percentage points of the 2019 scores. Again, another sign of recovering in that academic area. And finally, I wanted to share grade five math scores because, if you remember to last year, we talked about this grade level as being an area to watch because their scores were dropping, and we see a big increase over from last year to this year. If you think about last year's scores, I've added them in blue so that you can see the comparison of 50% of students being at or above, meeting or exceeding state benchmarks, and this year, 61%. So when we talk about achievement and we think about MCAS as raising expectations for all students, it's important that we look at subgroups. The high-need subgroup is a group that describes students that are students with disabilities, students who are English learners, and students, say, low income. And so if we look at this, this gives us a sense of achievement scores in the aggregate, which was that first slide I showed, like a snapshot of achievement over the grade, compared to the subgroup scores, which you see in orange and the state. So here you can see, for the most part, in math, our subgroup scores for high-need students are above the state high-need scores. But you can see the distance between the Shrewsbury subgroup scores in orange and the aggregate scores in dark blue. That's what we would call that achievement-opportunity gap. In order to close this gap, we'd need to see really high rates of growth for our students in our subgroups. You can see that these are the typical rates of growth in math. And you can see that most grades, well at the expected range of growth. If you look here, you can see that students in the high-need subgroup are growing at a rate that's very similar to their grade-level peers. But in order to close the academic achievement gaps that we see, the orange lines would have to be higher than the blue. So we still have some work to do in terms of closing opportunity gaps for students in those subgroups. And that's not just true for Shrewsbury, but it's something that we've been increasingly focused on in Shrewsbury. And our final chapter, English Language Arts. If I had to give a book report on this part, I would say that, on average, Shrewsbury students in grades three to eight are 11 percentage points before, compared to where they were in 2019, with the biggest gaps between pre- and post-pandemic scores being for our younger students in grades three and four. However, with the exception of one grade, and I'll talk a little bit about that soon, the achievement levels in the middle-level subjects either went up or stayed very close to last year's results. So while literacy is really the primary focus in terms of opportunities for improvement, we can see that we are increasing in some key grades, kind of where we were from last year. So I'm going to feature, like, this is our overall snapshot of achievement in English Language Arts. And you can see, again, the difference between the Shrewsbury scores and the state scores. And I'm going to highlight grade six and grade 10. Grade six, because we saw the biggest achievement gains in this subject area over last year, among the highest, both in the Assavitt Valley districts, but also in our DART districts. You can see that here. So that green line is kind of the state line. You can see it compared to other districts. It's always a good sign when we compare well in both cohorts. Again, I'm going to feature the high school scores because they most closely resemble our scores pre-pandemic. And then in terms of opportunity in ELA, as last year, we focused on grade five and talked a little bit about the concern with students in transition grades. My concern now is kind of looking at grade seven. Our achievement scores dropped from last year. Only 51% of our students in grade seven met our benchmarks in 2023, which is down from 58 in 2022. So you have this in your report because, as, when I look at a result, I also want to see the context. But I think it's also important to mention that, among the DART districts, Shrewsbury grade seven results were among the lowest three scores. And in the Assavitt Valley, only three other districts had lower scores in 2023. So just as when we look at a strong score and see how that compares, it's important also to be honest about when we have work to do as compared to other districts with similar demographics. When we look at the achievement scores of students in our high-needs group, again, that high-needs group are students with disabilities, English learners, and students that are low income. We can see that, you know, the gap that we saw in math is certainly true for English Language Arts as well. Again, here's our student growth measure in English Language Arts. So we saw that in math, almost at all grades, our scores were in the expected range. That's not as true in English Language Arts, so we'd want to see those scores for all students grow. And here, when we talk about closing the gaps, not only would we want to raise the blue bars so that they're higher up into the 60s, but we would need those orange bars to raise considerably in order to close gaps for English Language Arts. So, so what, now what? We're ending the last chapter of this report. We're going to continue to kind of use the data to drive not only how we support individual students, but how we think about curriculum shifts and changes. And when we look at an item analysis to kind of think about, are there places-- and science is a good example of this-- where we might need to rethink about the content that students get if they missed it, and how we can anticipate what they might need in eighth-grade STE? We would need to continue to collaborate across levels, discussing best practices and sharing resources, and also calibrating instruction. One of the things I've highlighted here is continuing to invest in English Language Arts. We have high-quality instructional materials now, K6, and consistency of practice that is driving kind of closing those gaps. We think about how students were doing at the beginning of the year and how they're doing now. And I want to thank you again for the reading specialists because I think that that's also fueled our use of the data. We see that kids are making progress. And finally, we want to work with district leaders to monitor that progress because our universal screening tool means that we don't have to wait for next year's MCAS scores to predict how kids are going to do or where their areas of struggle are. So you have this slide in your booklet, but I think it's important to kind of share, this is the prediction of STAR scores of kids who were predicted to be proficient in reading last spring and who actually met or exceeded the gaps. You can see that for all grade levels, STAR was correct in the prediction within about 10%. And so that means if we have that universal screener three times a year with more frequent monitoring for students that are below benchmark, we can look at real time to think about what is it that we need to do to support students. And finally, test store is a snapshot, but we don't have to wait for the pictures for next year. We can start to develop a story for student progress by looking at what's happening with our STAR score reports. And increasingly, I think, this year, in sharing them with parents and thinking about, right, we now know that this is a reliable assessment of student progress. How can we partner more effectively with parents to give them supports? And how do we think about, most importantly, in the classroom, what we need to adjust in order to accelerate student growth and not just remediate for past performance? Okay, I'm going to pause it. I didn't time myself, but I'm happy that that was quick.
It was good. Very quick.
Go ahead, Erin.
Thank you for the report. It's very well done, and I appreciate the overview that you gave us tonight. I just had a question that may be helpful for parents at home. The STAR screening, you said it's going to be done three times. Could you just kind of give us a when, when those tests are administered and just kind of the timeline?
So roughly, we have a fall screening window, a winter screening window, and a spring screening window. Our winter screening window is going to open, I think, in December 6th. And so then, of course, we assess for a period of time, and then we-- and kindergarten is a little bit behind because they started a little bit behind. And then we have a series of data meetings reflecting on, you know, how kids have grown from the first data cycle. The end-of-year data cycle isn't so helpful in terms-- I mean, it's been helpful in previous years for determining who might benefit from summer academy support. But it's more helpful of thinking about future planning or placement of students and how we make sure that kids get the supports that they need. So our winter screener should open soon. I don't have the date on my fingertips. I didn't print that out, but--
And it's K through eight, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I certainly really appreciate the report. And for those who are listening, it's 66 pages, and there's a lot there for us to go through. And you certainly gave the high-level sort of book summary of it. I think I walked away, this is more commentary, and I then just have to have a question about some areas, some areas of concern. But for my colleagues, I really walked away feeling like there's still a lot of need. And I don't want anyone to think that there isn't a lot of need and that we have-- we're, while we've sort of, you know, we all want COVID to be over, the impacts of COVID on the educational outcomes for all of our kids, but not saying that people are not trying very hard and putting in lots of effort. There are clearly still lots of gaps for us to work on for all kids and in particular for certain of our more vulnerable populations. And so some of them that jump out at me, and I know as we think about curriculum sort of K to six, that Oak reading scores, both at seventh and eighth grade level, and thinking about kids being prepared for high school, and I know you're paying attention to it. I have no doubt, Ms. Clouder, that you are. But as things, when I think about the community and what the community expects for education in our community, we are very, you know, we are high-performing, and people want it to stay that way and expect certain things. And I do also personally feel MCAS gives us one sense of that. It's an important one. It's not the be-all and end-all, but it is a metric by which we are certainly can be compared to other districts. So it does matter in that way. And I think, in particular, some places where I worry is less so about where are we from 2019 to 2023? Because I expect there to be a dip. But where are the places where in, from last year to this year, we saw dips go down? And are we asking people to do too many different things? And how do we focus on sort of what's most important? And at its core, I know we've been talking about it a lot through the last year around strategic planning, and we're at the very sort of beginning of implementation there. So hopefully, that helps us to remember what's important. But even as we do that, we kind of can't take our eye off the ball. Your note about science and science at the elementary level, right? When we said, "Let's focus on reading, writing." And of course, kids miss some science pieces, and you don't get them all over the-- you're expected to pick up multiple pieces over many years. So I certainly want people to feel good about the school system that we have, feel like people are doing what they need to to help our kids to do well. And yet, we still have a really significant need. And so that we're going to continue to, you know, invest as wisely as we can. And I think, does this, does this report double down on we made a good investment on literacy? Yeah, because we've got some more work to do, right? That's a multiple-year process. But it also does highlight some other areas where we need to not lose sight of. So that's more commentary. Can I ask you just one question, Ms. Clouder, about if I can? The, can you remind folks, because you have the 10th grade MCAS scores in here, and there's some murmurings about ballot measures and MCAS and graduation requirements that might happen for-- I was able to just pull quickly, our English and math were in the 70-ish range. I'm assuming that's for kids' first-taking of those, those that then become part of graduation requirements. But I haven't had a student graduate from Shrewsbury Public Schools, so I'm not as personally familiar with it. So can you just remind me sort of what that looks like and what, you know, does this say that 70% of the kids are going to graduate? No, of course not. But how does that work, and what does that look like for folks?
Yeah, if students don't pass it the first time, they get a retake opportunity. And so I think the scores that are reported are what the 10th grade results were at the first taking. Okay. But I, you know, we certainly see higher rates of that than kids because our graduation rate with diplomas is higher.
Right. And they need now pass to both, pass English, math, and that's a meeting or exceeding in either of those categories, but also on the science.
It's also needs improvement.
Or needs improvement. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer.
It's only, it's only the lowest category that would not--
I really needed that correction. Okay. Thank you very much. I do, I encourage people to take a look at this and to kind of know. It is complex and a lot. And I'm so glad that we have some more data to kind of guide our decision-making, but hopefully it can help us as we plan for the future what are the other areas we need to, you know, keep paying attention to.
Yeah, in terms of answering the question about the dips in math, the biggest dip was 3%. The dips really were around, and that was, sorry. Yeah, the biggest dip was 3%, and that was in grade six. All other places, we kind of went up or went down by one percentage when compared to last year. And we think about English Language Arts. We were down, you know, between 2% and 4% in, well, 2% in grade four, 7% in grade seven, which is why I featured that, 4% in grade eight, and 1% in grade 10. So the bigger dip was grade seven. And in terms of asking people to do too much, I think the big change for grade seven was advisory and really tightening up their approach there. But from a curriculum standpoint, grade seven and eight have been included in our professional development about ELA. They haven't been included in necessarily the adoption piece. So there's lots of training happening, and then we're thinking a little bit about, so how does the work that we're doing in K6 then translate into grade seven and eight? But as you mentioned, I think we will need more resources, and we don't have capacity right now to do implementation K8. That's a, it's a really heavy lift that we're doing right now with K4. But that said, we have introduced the foundational reading pieces and all the materials that relate to foundational reading. So that won't be new next year. It will really be a focus on expanding the expeditionary learning EL literacy piece. So we're trying to be really thoughtful about understanding that when you train people, you know, that training doesn't mean that they're expert. And so how do we give them training, and then how do we also give them support? And so having the reading specialists, having Kristin Osborne as support for both our coaching team, our specialists, and also our classroom teachers has been huge, thinking about how we garner that support because our interventionists for grade seven and eight, Pam Poitras and Lisa Daley, are curriculum coordinators. And right now, they're wearing two hats. So I think you're wise to think about the resource issues because those are going to be important.
Can I ask one more follow-up question? I apologize. It might be helpful in, I'm not asking this in the near term, but maybe in next year. I think it's going to be important for us as a community to sort of see the COVID bubble, right? Everyone experienced that for a couple of years. And the challenge when we do, when we do this, one year to last year, we're comparing this year's fifth-grade class to last year's fifth-grade class or vice, or go far back. And they had fundamentally different experiences during the time of COVID. And I think it's this longitudinal, and it will look different at the high school level. It obviously looks different at the elementary level. We see it in the science scores. We just, we made a conscious choice. It was the right choice, but that's going to have scores drop. To kind of look a little more longitudinally to see, okay, where did those things go down? And where did they come back up again? Where can we feel like we are on this natural trajectory of, hey, once a kid is in a third-grade classroom and they're getting third-grade reading, and they have a teacher, and they're there all the days of school they're supposed to be? We got it versus trying to do makeup. And it's sometimes hard to tell that when we're comparing a snapshot to kids who actually fundamentally had a different experience. And so as we look across the grade span, we just know they had really different experiences. Whether it was a kid who was doing virtual high school, right? Had obviously a very different experience than someone who was coming two days a week. So that might be helpful for us as we try to track these kiddos, whether they were in kindergarten or they were in eighth grade when COVID hit. Kind of like, what are we, what are we seeing?
Add to that the fact that we're getting record numbers of new students every year. So the cohort that we're thinking of is last year's grade five, and this year's grade six is not the same either.
Right, right.
So I think it's a good--
I realize I just threw a big data challenge at your--
I don't have--
No, 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 and I don't, I don't, I don't want you to have it now. No, 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 and I don't, I don't, I don't want you to have it now, but I think it's, it's important that we just sort of pay attention to that, that the population of students who are moving through our system, almost like the way we're gonna look at demographic data later for the district, like, it just, you know, we knew it was different at preschool. All the numbers went down. Like, well, what happened to those preschoolers, right? And what, how was their experience different? And, you know, this might be something that we even want to dedicate some resources to externally to kind of help us think about how to do that work, to kind of know what the, what the impacts are. Because I have a hard time certainly from where I sit, and I can imagine classroom teachers do as well.
Yeah.
Like, what of this is sort of COVID-related? What of it is we're changing curriculum practices? What of it is, you know, societal changes and social media is causing all the ills? I don't know, right? But, but that we can account for, and maybe if we looked at it over a longer term. All right, I'm done.
Fair question.
Great.
It is a huge data challenge.
I actually want to, so what you said, it was very similar to what I was going to say. Because looking at some of the data, you know, for me, I personally looked at, so grade three ELA, there was an improvement there. So grade three would have been our kindergarteners that when we shut the schools down, they were in the middle of learning to read and doing the basics, and then they were, you know, learning to read really on Zoom in first grade, and so their experience was a little bit different. So the fact that grade three is where they are, that to me is a good improvement versus fifth grade, which I had a fifth grader last year where the science went down. Her experience with the, the science, it was different than, you know, when she was learning where the basics start in like third and fourth grade. What she learned in science was way different than what my current fourth grader, because she's able to do more hands-on. She's getting the material. So it is, it is interesting just to see that we're going to see ups and downs throughout, because it really depends on what grade were they in and what did they, they lose, lose out on. But to add on to that, do we have, so we have STAR for, for ELA and math to see their, their progress. Do we have something to check in on science, or is that more classroom-based?
We have classroom-based common assessments at all grade levels. We're trying to move towards having some performance-based assessments, and that varies by grade. You talked about hands-on. That's why it was top of mind for me. But we definitely, even before STAR, I have to credit teachers with having, coming up with common assessments. It's not like that, that just began with the STAR piece. Yeah.
Thank you. You take a lot, like Ms. Heffron said, sixty-something-page report, and you can condense it to highlight what we're seeing as a district. And again, it's a snapshot. It's one point in time. We get the results after the students have already left the grade. So I'm, it's, it's good information to have. We're gonna have to look at it as we move forward the budget. But I like the fact that we have our own assessments three times a year. I think that gives a little more meaningful pieces of information for us to kind of benchmark and see how we're doing in a more timely fashion. One question I did have around some of our high-need students in that, what are you hearing around the state about any methodologies or areas to try to improve scores? Because it seems like this is an issue statewide.
Yeah, we actually invited the Office of Language Acquisition from DSE. They, they offered to send some experts in the field, and we said, yes, please, because we were looking specifically at students at the high school level who struggle in ways that we haven't really seen at the high school before. And they thought, well, there's a lot of things going well at Shrewsbury High School. They have an academic support block. They have a teacher in terms of the ELE department who's got a good grounding in language experience. And so that's kind of helpful for kids that are building their foundational literacy skills. What you don't have is somebody that can teach reading at the high school. So how we think about building capacity or lending support across levels to do that is something that's very top of mind for me. But in general, I think it's a matter of how do you have staffing and also flexibility of schedule so that kids can get the supports that they need without missing opportunities to excel in areas where they come with content knowledge? So you think of a student coming from Venezuela, for example, high achieving in math, but needs English support. Scheduling for those students, I give the high school team a lot of credit for thinking about how to hand-schedule a number of kids that's growing in order to accommodate the diversity of needs. The co-taught model is another thing that's really well-endorsed, and I credit Megan, her team, for really thinking about how do we at all levels grow capacity with, with co-taught sections in math and ELA specifically? But I think even at high school, we have them in science to make sure that, you know, students with disabilities are getting their needs met in a, with their same-age peers and also getting exposed to grade-level content.
Perfect. So we're already, we're doing some things, and there are other areas maybe we might need more resources for. And I think you, you know, you touched upon the student demographics changing from year to year and having maybe a difference in population at the high school with areas with, that we didn't experience in the past and maybe needing, so as we move forward in the budget cycle, I think this is a lot of the information that we need to kind of look at, want to be data and metrics-driven, and putting the dollars where we feel it needs to be needed most. So this is always very helpful every year to get this. Dr. Sawyer, any comments or statements?
I want to thank Ms. Clouder for putting the report together and for all the reasons that you stated. This is useful to us in terms of that yearly snapshot, as, as the analogy Ms. Clouder gave. And, you know, I do appreciate the work that goes into, you know, our curriculum leadership team, our principals and assistant principals, our teachers, and using the data, looking at things. I mean, sometimes these are curriculum pieces where we know, you know, there might be a particular question we didn't do as well on as, as we would expect, because, and we, and we know, because it wasn't something we were covering in the curriculum, and we can make those adjustments. But I think the most important piece is the, the shift we're making. I think that this reinforces that the strategic priorities and goals that you've approved are on target. And I'm particularly pleased that, more so than ever during my time as superintendent, we have very specific and systematic approaches to identify students who need additional help and providing them with those interventions and help during the course of the school year. And I do think that that certainly is what is considered to be best practice. I think, you know, we've had versions of that very successfully at the elementary level for a long time. We're adopting those kinds of approaches at the middle school level in a systematic way, really, for the first time. And while there'll be some growing pains, I think, I think it's going to be very gratifying to see, over the course of a year, how we're seeing students make progress on these internal assessments. And all research would say and point to that we should see better levels of proficiency as a result of that over time with, with that. But to Ms. Heffron's point earlier, it's over time. It's not, you don't expect this to turn around overnight. That said, with the quality of teachers we have, with their dedication, and if we're focusing time and energy on the right things, we'll get results. And I want to give Ms. Clouder kudos for her leadership and really helping at all the different levels, elementary, middle, and high school, helping to support our curriculum leaders and school leaders and educators and becoming more systematic in about the way we approach this so that our students can benefit. But it's important work, and we're, we're up to the task. I'm confident.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we are going to have a report on the Shrewsbury High School testing. Mr. Taubizilo, principal at the high school, is here. And this, he'll provide the performance data on standardized tests, including the SAT and AP tests. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone. Thanks for having me. Unfortunately, Angie Flynn couldn't be with us tonight, and she's put a lot of time, energy, and effort into the testing reports. I want to give her a shout-out for her help and assistance in compiling all this data. So just to go through for, again, for the viewing audience and for members of the committee, there's, we have standardized tests at the high school. We administer PSAT and National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Tests. They're the same thing. And the PLAN, which is an eighth-grade kind of test, eighth and ninth-grade test, which College Board is kind of pushing, for lack of a better word. We also administer SATs, ACTs. What's interesting is that we're finding, and you know this from previous reports, that more and more colleges and universities are going test-optional. We're up to nearly eighty percent now, or even above that, as test-optional, and more and more schools are going test-blind, which means even if you score really well on the SAT, they will not look your SAT scores at all. So there's more schools doing like that. Have a subscribe to that. And we'll also talk about our performance on advanced placement exams tonight, which are courses that we offer at the high school that could be awarded college credit if students receive a qualifying score and their matriculating university accepts qualifying scores. Oh, here we go, sorry. So again, beginning in 2021, the SAT eliminated optional subject area exams. The SAT essay and the subject area tests were eliminated. Part of this is in response to market share provided by ACT and the shift from a 2,400 score down to, back to a 1,600 score. We've talked about that in the past. And again, I led this in, in terms of eighty percent of universities are now test-optional, and nearly a hundred are blind, meaning a hundred schools are test-blind. Again, the good, I guess it's a good news story that SAT program results show that 1.9 million students took the SAT in the class 2023, and that's up from 2022. And when we saw the pandemic the year 2020 and 2021, the participation rate certainly dipped. And we're still there, and I'll show a graph later about our own participation rate. The SAT scores are in two areas, reading, evidence-based reading and writing, a score from 200 to 800 for that subject area, and also mathematics, 200 to 800 for a combined score of 1,600, and that's a scale. And what we've done here in this line graph has showed you our performance compared to, in red, Massachusetts, and yellow, the national numbers. If you look at 2017, 2016, and 2017, that's when they changed the test. And then if you look again at 2021, you see another bump in scores, and that's when participation was relatively low for students. And what we found is that students who are applying to really highly competitive colleges and universities decided to take the test to see what they could score and see if that would help boost their application. Also, students took it that year for potential merit money associated with SAT scores. So although the participation rate was lower at the, across the country, our scores were higher, which makes sense. Last year, we came back down to 1,220, and this past year at 1,217. So we're still above where we were, above the same scoring as when, where we were in 2018, 2019, and 2020, pre-pandemic. Here's just a subject-based score. We broke it down by, this is the evidence, reading, and writing score. And we're at 604, while the state of Massachusetts average mean score is 560, and the national average is 497. So again, performing well. And again, very similar to last year's score. In SAT math, again, we're very similar to pre-pandemic levels at 612. We had a seven-point drop. But if you look at Massachusetts, they're 551, and national is 482. So still outperforming our peers, both in Massachusetts and the nation, as it relates to math achievement scores. Here's that dip we talked about, and ninety-five percent in 2020, and then just the bottom fell out with the pandemic, fifty-two percent. And then with last year, two years ago, eighty-one percent, and last year, eighty percent. And this is one of the most interesting things. I haven't seen this since I've been in Shrewsbury. I can't remember a time. I didn't go all the way back. But this year, males scored higher, 613 average, over females, 597 for a sixteen-point difference. That's significant, because I think it's the first time that males have actually outperformed females in writing and reading test, in my memory. Again, we're above the Massachusetts and national mean for both males and females. So that's, again, a good news story. And you look at the second part where it says math, again, males outperformed females 636 to 594, with a plus forty-two male-to-female difference, and again, outperforming state peers across the board again. Just a bar graph of where we stood with combined scores. Critical reading is, which we talked about in the math, and the blue is the males, and the red are the females. And we've really taken a really hard, last probably three years, we started to take a harder look at race and ethnicity. And this is self-reported by students. And we looked at total population of the school, of the class, and also their participation rate, and then their combined score. So this, we just wanted to show a graphic representation table here of what each ethnicity and race scored as self-reported to the College Board from our own school. And no response. I, we're finding more and more students don't want to respond to survey data around this stuff. So again, I think they scored relatively well there as well. The PSAT, or National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, that's, this past year, we had twenty-six commended students, three finalists, and one scholarship recipient. That's pretty much on pace with where we've been for the last five years, very similar metrics. The scholarship is essentially a $5,000 scholarship. The National Merit will give you 2,500, and then match, schools will match that. So when people want to know what the national, what the actual scholarship is, it's about a $5,000 scholarship. There have been higher scholarships with corporate matches being higher than that. I've seen 7,500, so, but generally, it's about 5,000. So here are five quick AP highlights. We've had 436 students last year taking AP exam, which was, AP exams, which were 12 fewer than last year. We're also down on the number of exams administered, down from 976 to 916. Fifty-nine percent of our seniors took one exam, which is really high compared to area high schools, and again, across the state and the country. Thirty-one percent of the exams, again, one out of three students, about one out of three students scored a five on the exam, which is really the highest possible score. And another piece that is a growing segment of our population is the VHS, where we had forty people either take a VHS course or self-study exam. And one of the things that Mrs. Wynn did, one of the assistant principals, we worked on getting a grant through the state to provide computer science as a VHS that doesn't come on our school budget piece. So we have students enrolled in computer science at high schools through virtual high school, studying CSA or CSP. And that actually cost us picked up for those seats at VHS through the state through this grant we have. And that's, it's the second year, I think, we've done that now. So it's been a good, it's been a benefit for our students, because we don't offer the VHS computer science core, computer science course, either A, CSA, or computer science principles at AP at the high school. Again, a bar graph across for the last nine, ten, eleven years here around the participation rate and the number of students taking it in blue, and the number of exams administered in red. Again, we see market increase over the last, you know, five to seven years. And again, the participation rates are still high, and we've been really lowered pre-2014 even. Oh goodness, before this graph even started, we, we had a lot of prerequisites. We've kind of eliminated a lot of those prerequisites. It eliminated barriers for students to come in. We relied on a lot on teacher recommendation and having conversations with school counseling and parents, and then having subsequent meetings with both teachers and directors around the volume of classes that could be taken, should be taken, and the student load in terms of balancing out their own schedules. So that's where we are with that. This is basically subject area tests across the board. This graph represents our scores in blue, the Massachusetts scores in red, and the green scores are in the national averages. So as you can see, we're above the state and national averages on every exam we offer except Chinese, Chinese language, and also Physics I. Interesting enough, for those that remember, we had, we used to run physics alternating with chemistry. Last year, and you talked about access, last year, we had three sections of physics, two in Physics I and one in Physics C. We had forty-eight students in Physics I, so that's a huge increase in terms of the number of kids participating in a physics course. So I've met with Mr. Riscosi and Mrs. Monopoly about the scores, and we've looked at some of the scores and also item analysis stuff. We think there's definitely room for improvement there, but also the access piece of allowing students to take that. Colleges are looking for bio, chem, and physics, and students feel like that weight of AP is strong on their application. But we have some room for growth there as well. And Chinese, it's a, I think it was the first year we had a new Chinese teacher. And again, there's a growth curve with that. Whenever time we change and, and change teachers, that, that's, that happens. So overall, overall, a good news story for the community and also our, our school and our teachers who've done an outstanding job of preparing students for the, for the exam. Vast, I wouldn't say a vast number, I should say, a number of schools, colleges, and universities have increased advanced placement scores for college credit, accepting only fours and fives. And if you look across the board, there's a number of courses here that have fours and fives. There are still colleges that accept threes, but more selective colleges are looking for fours and fives. Additionally, if you're in the audience, parents should know that if you plan to major in a biology or a chemistry, or sometimes those engineering courses with calculus and mathematics, those majors at colleges and universities don't accept AP credit, because they want you to be in their program. Still not a reason not to take it here at the high school, but it's just eyes wide open around. around the course selection process, which will be coming up soon. Again, again, 85% of our students scoring three or above in the green, and again, a five-year segment of five being the highest possible score, four being the next score, and three being above. And typically, these are all qualif, generally qualifying scores for college credit for colleges and universities. Again, taking a look at subgroups by race, race and ethnicity, and also self-reported. We put the total number of junior seniors in the far right column, so you can take a look at that. And across on the right, on the left-hand column, the race and ethnicity reported, and the number of students in the second column from the left, and basically the number of exams that were taken by each subgroup, and then their mean score. We've also took, taken a look at low income as well, students with disabilities and English language learners or former English language learners, both those populations were less than five, so we did not report that. But again, we look at our low-income students across the board. Again, strong performance for those that identify in that subgroup. And then we look at male and female, again, looking at gender and how males and females performed in the tests in comparison with each other. So we're looking, we're taking a really wide look at every possible perspective to try and address any gaps or issues we may see, and that's something that we're continually Again, advanced placement has these designations for students with AP scholar, AP scholar with honors, AP scholar with distinction. It's the number of tests you take and the mean score you get. Three or above starts with AP scholar, 3.25, I believe, for scholar with honors, and 3.50 above average score. And each one of these is like, start with a number of exams, so I have to look at the notes on my, my presented notes to be exact here, but I think that the AP scholar, which they got rid of, was typically like five or more exams with four or higher. But total in the high school, we had 173 students qualify, which is right on, right on par with what we've seen in the past in this chart, six years. This is a new report. The AP came out with the honor roll, which is an interesting perspective. The college culture is basically, it's if one student takes, if a student in the class of grad, if one student in the class of, the graduating class of 2023 took one exam. So we had 59%, so we fell into that silver category. The college credit, if the number of students who were, who in the class of 2023 scored three or higher and leased one AP, we're at 54%. And the optimization is a really interesting one to me. We received bronze with only 2%, seven out of 459 members of the class receiving this designation. The optimization is essentially saying that students need to take five or more APs, and they have to start taking them in the ninth or 10th grade. One of those exams has to be in ninth or 10th grade. We don't offer students ninth and 10th grade exams, so that's why that score is so low. We could have conversations about, you know, our thoughts about the college optimization and what that might look like in providing students opportunities. We've held firm in terms of like preparing students for what we think is college-level work at freshman or sophomore year might not be the best. And I'm curious why college board has done that. And just, I know, I believe most of you know this, and those that might not in the community know this, we, our school profile, basically, we send this into every, with every application that goes out to college and university. And my last report, I think last week or two weeks ago, was like 95% of students went on a college or university or post-secondary schooling. It's basically our community demographic, our graduation requirements, course levels, GPA, AP and SAT scores. This talks about the rigor of the school, so when readers read that, they have a good sense of what the school's like, and I think we have a really rigorous, high-performing school, which adds value to a student's application. Future plans and special programs, we kind of put that into a one-pager. And our school counseling department, I think I've informed you in the past, has worked on this with school admissions counselors to put the most important information right up front of what they're really looking for. So we made adjustments each year as we talk to people that read applications. Okay, I'll take any questions.
There you go. Thank you. Any questions or comments, Rachel?
Thank you for this. I found this very interesting. I had, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but, so I'm glad that so many kids are taking AP exams, even if the numbers come down just a little bit, because I think that it's a great prep for college and what that workload is, because it teaches students time management, self-starting, studying skills. I guess my concern, it wasn't in this, but I guess sort of is. And maybe concern isn't the right word, but with students that elect to take two, three, four, five AP classes, is there a sense that they're taking the tests because they think that makes them a more competitive, like, I want to go to the Ivy Leagues, and this is the only way that I'm going to get in is if I score fives on five tests, like, I have to have all these? Or in the course selection process, are we saying to them, like, yeah, it's great to, this is a great prep for you, but even more so than being like the perfect candidate, actually, you can earn course credit or qualify for merit-based financial aid? I just worry that, you know, are students and families taking AP classes because that makes them like the perfect candidate versus like, right?
There's no easy answer to that. I'll try. I would say this, I think that there is a feeling out there that if you take advanced placement courses, you might have a leg up in terms of the college application process. Our college application officers will tell you that looking at every application holistically and test-blind, they look at what you look, what our college profile, our school profile is, student performance within that profile in terms of their grades, and they're really looking at students' interests beyond the classroom. One of the things most recently, when we talked to admissions officers, was does a student have a job, hold a part-time job? I think they're putting a value on soft skills. What else do they do beyond the academics? They want to see like a really well-rounded, rich experience, high school experience versus I'm a student that took 25 APs and got fives on all the APs, and I'm a super, like, I'm a, just an absolute intellect academic. They want to see people involved in more than that, and give back to their community, volunteer service, having those experiences that really will help their own community grow and bring value to the community when students go in there. So the short answer is yes, I believe there is a narrative out there within families and communities and colleges that like, sure, we need to have students have, take rigorous course loads. I think that is definitely part of it, but I also think there's shifting perspective through college admissions that they want to see something beyond all the academic piece. Like, what are you passionate about? How are you going to make a difference in the world? What's so unique about you? Because that profile that you described is every student, every student applying to an Ivy League school. I mean, the competition for those schools is so incredibly difficult. Geographically, I always say this to our students, we're in kind of a tough spot, we're in the Northeast, and there's a number of those schools in the Northeast, so we're competing against 80% of students, 85% of students will live, go to school within two to three hours of their geographic home location. Some of the greatest schools in the country are in the Northeast within two, three hours of Shrewsbury, right? Within striking distance or a car drive. You don't, you wouldn't need to get on a plane. So that's a, that's definitely a challenge, I think, when you're competing with people from Wyoming or Idaho or North Dakota or wherever. Because schools also want to fill out their profile of, we have everyone from every 50 states and territories represented within our student population. It's a long, long answer to a very complex question.
Yeah, I, thank you very much, and I'm a little bit, I think, taking, taking the bait here on this college optimization and like what we think about that. And I will, I will say, in having a call with Dr. Sawyer earlier, right, I have nieces and nephews in towns outside of Shrewsbury, who, where their freshmen are taking APs, right? And so my, my kids think, see, their nieces, you know, their cousins taking APs in freshman year and think that that's very normal, and I've, you know, tried to hold the line and respect that where the, where we have been as a district about why that maybe doesn't make sense. And the college, the college board is an interesting organization that has, it's, I just wonder a lot about what the motivation is here, but I also am remembering back a few meetings ago, you were saying, we're kind of looking at our courses of study, I think you said, you said, like, we're kind of taking a holistic look, and as we see the number of kids, there was one of your charts, right, we had a number of kids, call it 10 years ago, 315 or so kids taking advanced placement rates, and now we're at like 450. So are we offering a bunch more courses? I know we have major space constraints, even if we decided tomorrow, wow, we should have tons more APs, there's a whole question about where and how and staffing, et cetera. But kind of what that makes you think is a little bit of a longer game for us as a, as a district, as we think about, and knowing that we put in our strategic plan that we wanted to see more kids, kind of to your point, for a whole bunch of different reasons, encouraged to try some of the more rigorous material and making sure that's hitting all the different demographic groups that we want to touch. And so I'm just wondering what you're thinking the, the longer game might look like for high school course offerings, and if we should be doing more APs? Is that the direction we should be going to for younger grades?
We'd have to investigate that more. I'll say this, because I'm curious about the optimization as well.
Yeah.
I think, I will, I will pitch this, I will pitch this. For those that have worked on the Common App, we offer Project Lead the Way programming at the high school. Project Lead the Way programming is considered, in that application, is in the same veil or in the same vein as advanced placement coursework. Dual enrollment, which we have an articulation agreement with Worcester State College, Worcester State University, we send students there to take, participate in college-level courses in the spring and fall. That also is a question on the college application. So there's not one size fits all. I think students in colleges rather are looking for students that are doing a variety of different high-level coursework that is complex beyond AP. We're offering those things, and I think if students are looking for something that's not AP, but yet can add it to their common application for college or university, Project Lead the Way is one of the designations. Dual enrollment is another, another designation. We have both those offerings at the high school. They're not as popular, and I don't think they're as popular as a result of the, the talk and buzz around advanced placement. But within the Common App, for those on the committee who've done the Common App recently, you've probably seen that Project Lead the Way and Dual Enrollment is actually designated as a similar weight in terms of the application.
I think it's interesting, I think back to when I was in high school, there was no AP courses dating myself. So I mean, we've seen this shift to, you know, SAT and ACTs, for, when we had SAT, and we had ACTs in this part of the country, and we keep seeing shifts in what colleges look at, what they're using, and around APs. Some families may think this is the main thing that they need for their children to get into whatever college. Can you speak to, I know it's in our report, can you speak to the self-study for APs? If I remember correctly, we do have students self-study, but those scores are not accepted by colleges and universities? Is that correct?
Right, so they could put, they could ask the college board to send those scores for, I believe, $18, or whatever it is to send those scores. But no, when you look at, when college admissions officers are looking at transcripts, they would not see that on the transcript. And when we're talking about the voluminous amounts of applications that come in, they're looking at what's offered at the school, and did a student take the most rigorous course load possible, and what's their performance like? So if you self-study, whatever it may be, AP human geography as a freshman or 10th grader, that's not going to end up on a transcript, and that wouldn't be, even on the Common Application, wouldn't be a part of that. So part of that, would you have to send that score in and see if they'd accept it for a cost?
For a cost, right. And I think looking at this whole optimization, which was new, you know, looking at that is through the college board, might also be a marketing piece and cost piece for them as well, if they could have more ninth and 10th graders taking AP courses. And I, our program of studies, we want to have rigorous enough that students have a broad experience, and maybe not all eight, you know, five APs or just honors level, or whatever meets their criteria to, for them to have the best broad experience within their level. So I think this is really good information to have, but it's just very interesting how things have changed so much over time and what colleges look at.
The, the shift in the SAT makeover back in 2017 was a result of losing market share to ACT, if you remember that. SAT has regained market share as a result of working with schools and states to regain market share. So, yeah, you can, you can probably read a lot about this stuff online, but it's definitely an interesting, it's interesting to read different perspectives of what the value of these things are. I do think they create value in terms of the rigor of the coursework, in terms of preparing students for what they will see at college, and the pace and the complexity of what they're seeing. And students who generally participate in advanced placement coursework find the work very difficult, but get used to the pace and the rhythm and the routine of it, which I think is, helps prepare them for the rigor and routine and rhythms of college and university. That's not to say everyone should take it either, it's, it's, it's really up to families and students, but yeah.
And I think something we hear, you know, from our own students or family or friends, that our students leave very well-prepared. They get to college and they are well-prepared, and they may never have taken an AP course, but they are well-prepared and sometimes are doing better than students who might have taken something else. So I think our program of studies, we, that's something we want to make sure we stay up on and provide the resources, but this is always, again, good information to have to see where we're doing within other areas and within the state as well. Dr. Sawyer, any statement or comments?
Certainly want to thank Mr. Zillo for your board and Ms. Flynn, who worked hard on it as well. I think that, you know, to the question about, you know, appropriate grade level to start the work, you know, this, this new metric that the college board's provided is quite interesting in that their, their statement on their website about, you know, when students should be considered, what appropriate grade levels are for AP courses, still has a big caution about ninth grade. Interestingly, the statement, which is virtually the same statement as it was a few years ago, but the other one is still available online, actually framed as saying that their best position is part of a student's 11th and 12th grade experience. Now they're actually incentivizing schools to, to give courses in ninth and 10th grade. And we know that they're losing revenue because not as many kids take the SAT anymore, because it's so much more of an optional test for college admissions. So if you want to look at that through a cynical lens, you know, they're, they're looking to get more kids to pay for more exams. That said, you know, certainly there are peer schools that offer AP at younger grades and, you know, have made decisions to do that, and I think it'd be interesting to know a little bit about how that plays out. I, I have some, you know, they, their own statement, of course, is that most ninth graders are not in a position to be successful in a college-level course. And we know we have some brilliant students, certainly in Shrewsbury, as, as other districts do as well, who academically could probably succeed in an AP course when they're in sixth grade or seventh grade or eighth grade. It doesn't, it's an appropriate level to be, you know, in terms of the rigor or the pace or whatnot. So, you know, trying to make sure that we're providing enriching, appropriately challenging coursework, regardless of what it's labeled, and, you know, something we have to continue to, to consider, you know, what, what makes sense for, for our students in their, in their course of studies. The other piece about that metric around the optimization, or whatever they're calling it, is that they're, they're sort of selling that as, you know, ways to take AP courses without, without condensing them all into 11th and 12th grade. So again, they're, they're, the college board's approach to this is definitely shifting, and they're a bit of, I know Mr. Zillo shared an article with me the other day, in that they're a bit of a black box because they have some research they cite about some of the benefits of AP in terms of students being more successful in college, even if they don't score a three on the exam. However, they don't, they haven't published in that data, so it's not really peer-reviewed, and people are, and there's, there's some skepticism in the field about how that's playing out. So I think to some of the other comments, I mean, I, I think we should all feel very good about the way that we're preparing our kids for post-secondary experiences, and particularly, the vast majority of our kids go on to two- and four-year colleges, and they, and the, you know, is, is any data we have, as well as lots of anecdotal data, says that they're, they're well-prepared. We also know, and we saw from the report last time, that our students, over time, consistently have had access to the most, what the word, word is that I'm forgetting the, the rigorous to get into, and I'm forgetting the word that typically is used, but, you know, and that's something, obviously, if we have students who aspire to get into a particular school, we, we have proven that we have a course of study that allows for that. And at the same time, I absolutely concur with the approach we've been using, which is to advise students and their families to try to find what the best fit and matches for what their aspirations are. We're not about, let's try to get as many kids into quote-unquote "high-end" schools as we can and pat ourselves on the back. I would much rather a student go to a school that's the right fit for them and excel there and, and take that and move on and live a successful life than somehow go to a school that has a great name brand, but it's not the right fit and they're not going to that has a great name brand, but it's not the right fit and they're not going to have a good experience there, unfortunately. And I think sometimes that brand name has become too prevalent in the American system, so to speak. So I think it's something that, again, as far as the range of courses that we offer, but, you know, overall, the data that was presented, our students are, are performing well, our educators do a superb job preparing them, and it's not just about that one exam because that exam is a snapshot in time, but it's what they take with them. You know, the writing skills, the research skills, the, the general knowledge that they're bringing from those AP classes to their post-secondary experience, that's where the true value is. So it's not all about admissions. So again, appreciate the report and we'll continue to look at what we think is the best set of options we can give to our students for their coursework at the high school level.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda under Finance and Operations, Mr. Girardi, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, will provide information regarding enrollment projections for the district's students population in future years. And this report includes information on historical and projected enrollment from the New England School Development Council, the Shrewsbury Town Manager's Office, and the McKibben Report, which is created for the recent capital planning report that we received. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Okay, again, so I'll be giving the enrollment projections report for 2023, 2024 in preparation for our upcoming budget cycle for the 24, for FY '25, which is 2024, 2025 school year. This is well timed. October 1st is when we, when we submit our, our enrollment projection for the year. That's our state data that we use for, for the school year. And when we do that, we then submit it to the Town Manager's Office and we submit it to, to NESDEC, the New England School Development Council. And what they do is they crunch numbers and produce a report that we rely upon as multiple-party sources to give us enrollment data for the coming school year and beyond. We also have a third report that I'll speak to tonight, the McKibben Report, and that's a report that was done by a demographer, the McKibben Report, when we did our pre-K to 12 capital investment and assessment study. All right. So we have kind of three, three key ideas here. One is enrollment projections. They provide a trusted source of information for short and long-term planning. Short, short-term projections provide the data we need for our annual class size and staffing decisions when we do approach our budget cycle. And then long-term projections that provide data for capital planning decisions into the near future.
Mr. Girardi, sorry to interrupt. Can you just hit the slideshow button so that we can, it'll blow that up a little bit on the screen?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, again, so three reports, Town Manager's Enrollment Projection. This is a standard cohort survival method. Takes a five-year average for each cohort from births and then the average of, of students in preceding years. NESDEC is again a three-year cohort survival method. And then the McKibben Report is a cohort component method. And I'll speak to each of those in the next slide here. So what's shown here is the birth and cohort survival. It's a slide. If you look at the first in 2011, Shrewsbury had 373 births. And then each subsequent year, it tracks the births per year. And then entering K, which is five years later, so 2011 they're born, 2016 they'll be entering K, and it shows the number of students that are entering kindergarten in that year. So 373 births, 388 students entering kindergarten, and that gives us a ratio of how many students between birth and entering K for that year. And over subsequent years, it gives us a, a pretty accurate understanding of how many students are entering kindergarten for that year. So that takes into account kind of the numbers that we don't know. You know, it doesn't have our current enrollments, say, fourth grade going into fifth grade. This gives us a nice estimate for our incoming kindergarten class. A couple of points here, 2020, 2022, those are significantly lower numbers as far as births for that year. That's something that we'll talk a little bit about later when we talk about some long-term projections. And then some assumed births this year were through 241 births through the first 10 months, which is going to average or come out to about 289, which again is on kind of the low level. So these are, this is information that we'll be looking for as we're planning out subsequent years. 2019 is the number that we're looking at for this upcoming year, projecting for the 2024 incoming kindergarten class. And there's 352 students who were born in that year. So we're looking at a pretty decent number, somewhere around just below 400 students for our incoming kindergarten class. So again, when we look at these projections, we take our actual of, from October 1st, 2023, and this slide here shows each grade level and the actual students that we were accounting for in our enrollment report totaling 5,723 students as of October 1st. We look at the NESDEC projection, the Town Manager projection for this current year, and again, those numbers come out to somewhere close, we're a little bit higher than both of those reports. And highlighted here are a couple of grade levels that we'll talk a little bit more in depth in some upcoming slides. Grade seven, we noticed that the actuals are down a bit from those projections. And then grades nine and 10, the numbers are up in those, in those, in those grade levels. And then here's a comparison across different levels. Kindergarten through fourth grade, we're up about 50 or so students, 40, 40 students. Grades five through eight, we're down a handful of students. Grades nine through 12, we're up, up about 60 students. And, and talking about these, there's different factors that will go into this. The numbers are very helpful in helping us plan, but then we also take some of the real-time data and say, what is happening here that's having the projections off a bit? Three things that we'll talk about are, we have some, our emergency homeless families who came to us, they were not projected by the Town Manager or NESDEC or the McKibben Report because they weren't known during that time. So those numbers, say, the 1990 in elementary school, we have about 40 students at the elementary level who, from the emergency homeless shelter that factor into those numbers. 1863 at the middle schools, we have students who have entered St. John's for seventh and eighth grade. Those are numbers that are new to us and it'll take some time for that to play out over years with our projection reports. And then the increased numbers at the high school, again, taking a look at the ASABET numbers, students who historically would have gone to ASABET for ninth grade and beyond are no longer, no longer have seats for ASABET. And here are the numbers for ASABET, you know, since 1819 where we averaged a little bit over 100 students in those years prior to the pandemic. They've come down subsequently in years since ASABET has changed their policies around accepting students from Shrewsbury. And then, you know, '23, '24, we're at 47 students, zero students in the ninth grade. And then each successive year up until '26, '27, those students will graduate out, no new students coming in, and those students will be assumed at Shrewsbury High School or another school that they may choose to go to. Okay, so some short-term planning for next school year. This slide here, the, the row in green is taking our current enrollment and pushing them forward into the next school year. So kindergarten, which I have plugged as 396, which takes the, the birth rate of the 352 students times the 1.1 number, and then increasing that to 396, which is the Town Manager's projection. And typically we'll go with a higher projection, projection at kindergarten just to make sure that we're accounting for the students that could be coming in. But then the 359 students in grade one, that's our current kindergarten, current kindergarten class, just pushed forward, and the same is true for each of the grade levels. 359 students in grade one, Town Manager, NESDEC both have it higher. That's probably going to be true. We typically have more students coming in at grade one that did not attend kindergarten. So as we're making projections for next year, we'll probably go with a higher number towards the Town Manager and NESDEC number to account for those, those move-ins that we've historically seen that we don't have currently with us. Another example, grade seven, that's our current grade six students moving into grade seven. It's, those numbers are slightly higher than Town Manager, NESDEC. We'd probably go with a number closer to the Town Manager and NESDEC because we have students now, we now know are going to St. John's for seventh grade. So we'll, we'll start to account for that. And then grade nine, again, those numbers will, will prepare for students remaining in Shrewsbury that otherwise would have gone to ASABET. So again, taking numbers that are, that are pretty accurate and then kind of putting the human factor of some real-time things into them as we're making projections for the upcoming budget. And these numbers will drive the chart that you see each year in, in the budget portfolio that has the elementary schools, how many sections at each elementary school that will tell us how many students will be in each section to fall within the school committee guidelines, how many teachers we need to be able to do that from kindergarten through grade 12. Something that's not listed here is preschool. Preschool is a little bit of a different animal in that we have a fixed number of seats based on space and different preschool options that we have. We, you know, we hold spaces for students who may qualify for special education services that would require us to provide a spot for those students in preschool. So the number that's projected over time is 242. That's stable over time because that's the number of total seats that we have if we were to be full. And as we get into some long-term projections, I'll talk a little bit more about what that means for preschool. So the other component is our long-term planning. So the blue, the blue line above is the actuals as of 10-1, the 5,723 students that we have. And then taking those numbers, comparing them to the Town Manager, NESDEC, and the McKibben Report, and then looking at three-year increments, '23, '24, '26, '27, '29, '30, and then '32 to '33, to see what the trend over time is showing us. I think some things that it's showing us is there are incremental decreases over time. They are not significant as to what some other communities are anticipating as far as our numbers going down. When I think about the high school and the overcrowding at the high school, this is not telling us that we're going to just naturally trend down to 1,400 students and be the right fit for the current building. It's telling us that we're going to remain overcrowded at the high school over time. At the elementary level, again, getting back to preschool, you know, when we're looking at preschool space and the desire for preschool, which is coming, I think, organically from families looking for a, a more robust preschool option, and then also thinking about what the state might do over time around mandating preschool services. It's something that we'll need to think about as far as the numbers there and having our hard cap at 242, given our current space configurations. So again, another piece to think about when we're looking at long-term planning. But this does speak to the pre-K to 4 space study that we are currently in the midst of and using this information to really help us understand what numbers are going to look like over time. Also, we're, you know, with the high school, as we're hoping to hear from the MSBA anytime now around their decision about accepting us into the eligibility phase of the, the next module there for the high school. All right. So to summarize, short-term enrollment projections, it offers data to make accurate budget-related decisions around class size, around staffing. We have to take into account real-time adjustments that are not captured in these enrollment projections, including our emergency shelter population, St. John's offering middle-school programming, loss of seats at ASABET. Long-term enrollment projections provide data for capital planning purposes that project enrollment trends over time for us to keep pace with physical space needs and evolving mandates for educating students. And then monitoring low birth numbers from 2020, 2022, and potentially 2023 with trends at the state and national levels to understand the potential downstream impact on future enrollments. I think some of the reduction in numbers over the 10-year period that those reports are showing really are speaking to those low birth rate numbers in recent years and how those will project out over time. With that, a lot of data tonight, a lot of graphs tonight from, I think, all of us, so a lot to process again, but happy to answer any questions that people may have.
Questions or comments?
Thank you. I think for me, looking at it, the first is that short-term as we move into the budget cycle and class size and space needs, staffing, all of those are part of it. So we need that, ease, those numbers are a little more we can rely on. But then when we're looking at capital planning and we're looking at the pre-K through 4 and needing that long-term assessment of what we're looking at going forward as a district, and we're not seeing a significant decrease, and I know we've talked about it in our capital planning subcommittee, looking at even just home sales. Like this doesn't take into, it's just looking at the birth rates. We're not looking at, you know, home sales and move-ins and, you know, people aging out and moving out of town. So there's a lot of change that can happen. And what surprises me, we, we used to worry about that giant bubble we had at the middle school level for so long, and now that's our lower piece projecting out. So things do change during, you know, over time. So data we need to move forward as a school committee in a lot of areas, including whole capital planning, which is going to be very important to have as we move forward through this next subcommittee work. Nothing further? Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Girardi, for the report. And for all the reasons stated, this is really critically important, both in the short-term around budget planning and then longer-term around capital planning. And we've already done some work with the pre-K to 4 Capital Planning Committee with these projections and that, that will play into their recommendation that group makes in the springtime relative to pathways forward. But, you know, it's something that we're, we're doing year over year because it is such important data. And I appreciate how Mr. Girardi's gotten up to speed with it and we'll be utilizing it in the budget planning in the weeks and months ahead. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next, we are going to have Dr. Sawyer present his superintendent goals for the 2023, 2024 school year, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. PDF here. This is a little later in the cycle than typical, but we, as you know, worked through a variety of processes this fall to finalize the one-year district goals and action steps with the new strategic plan that we have. And so building off of that, there are, you know, first and foremost, that set of goals is ultimately what I'm responsible for as superintendent in shepherding the work of the school district. It's a collective responsibility for all of us, of course, in the district, but I, I am accountable to the achievement of those goals to the best of our ability. But additionally, the state required process for the evaluation of superintendents requires me to have some additional personal goals, at least one in both the categories of student learning and professional practice. Because there are several different student learning goals that are in the district goals, I felt it would make sense to add a personal goal in this area relative to outlining the district's fiscal priorities relative to advancing student learning and to effectively communicate around those needs in order to ultimately get support for a budget plan that, that provides those resources. So that essentially is the goal, and you see the actions that are suggested in terms of the collaborative work with district leaders to put together a fiscal 25 budget plan, present that in a way, in a manner that's, articulates what the key investments are that we need that will advance student learning and, you know, communicate the importance of that to various stakeholder groups in order to get support for that budget plan ultimately. So that will be under the umbrella of student learning. In terms of professional practice, this should look familiar because it's very similar to the goal I've had each of the last two years where I've made some progress. to the goal I've had each of the last two years, where I've made some progress each year, but I think it's an important area, which is around communication. And in this case, communication protocols, both external and internal, to, you know, continue to work on how we can be most effective with our communications, both with families as in the community as well as internally with staff. And the action steps really continuing to to look at best practices around both external and internal communications. But also, one thing that's a little different this year, I I've had the good fortune to be, have been accepted into a cohort of superintendents with a national group called Leading Now, which has a focus on communicating, particularly around challenging issues in in today's political and cultural climate. It's been a really strong program so far, and I've already learned a lot from the peer superintendents from other parts of the country, as well as some others in Massachusetts as well. And then working through that as well as other best practices around just establishing protocols that are effective. And then at some point, looking for some feedback as to how those different pieces are going. So nothing that is particularly outside of the the framework that we've been working on relative to our strategic plan and my ongoing work around communication and wanted to try to be sure to make sure that they they fit together well. So that's what I'm proposing this evening and happy to receive any feedback and ultimately a vote from the school committee to approve them. And this will be part of my evaluations will take place in the mid-spring before the next school committee election.
Any comments, questions? Go ahead, Lindsay.
I I just want to appreciate, I think, we did all of the strategic planning work to kind of align under what's the leadership direction. So it makes perfect sense to me that these, that we not need to duplicate, like that is what we're we're here to implement. So, Dr. Sawyer, when you and I discuss this, I think that's just, that that's a smart move, and the more we can make that, that's both that set of work and that document, sort of the guiding, guiding force behind all of the things we do, the easier, the easier it'll be to communicate it, but also to really align and and figure out what we what we need to say no to as well. So I I think this makes a ton of sense.
Thank you. And I also agree, I think it dovetails very well with, you know, the strategic goals and priorities. It focuses on key areas and communication, strong communication is always a sign of a good organization. So I'm glad to see that as a continued goal. I think it, no matter what we do to improve it, it always helps that way. So if there's nothing further, we can take a vote. I have a motion to approve the superintendent's goals for 2023 through 2024 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next, we have our minutes from our school committee workshop held on November 8th and the school committee meeting held on November 15th, 2023. Are there any changes or corrections? There being none, these can be marked as accepted as distributed. And do we deem it to go into executive session this evening? For the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, Purpose 7, Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, and B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, Purpose 3, the Shrewsbury Education Association's Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association and/or the Cafeteria Workers' Association, where the deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and we return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. I have a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote is required. Ms. Ravivapour?
Aye.
Ms. Dewinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.